All right, Mr. Spoor. The next thing is the light rail transit extension update.
Right. Mayor and members of council, the Federal Transit Administration signed off on the draft environmental impact statement. You have copies of the document itself at your place in those manila envelopes. There are a couple of much thicker appendices if anybody's interested in those, as well as a thumb drive on that. Dave Hanson's here to talk to you about it. We thought it was important, and we've been waiting for FDA to sign off since really the end of last year, but as soon as that happened, to try and get to council and talk about where we are in terms of our analysis in conjunction with HRT and the city staff in terms of recommending a way forward and a schedule, and try and get that information out to the public as soon as possible. So that was today. So Dave Hanson's here to walk you through this.
Sure.
Hey, glad to have you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, city manager. I'm joined today by Ray Marusa, Julie Timm, who are from HRT, our partners in the DEIS, in the environmental impact statement study. And these are our agenda items today. First of all, to update you, as the manager said, it's a crucial period that we were hoping to reach so that we could come forth, provide an update. We haven't had a discussion since your workshop on light rail. And we also want to just come right out and provide the staff recommendation with regards to what we think is the appropriate way to proceed. I'm going to explain some factors and considerations about how we got to our staff position with regards to this minimal operational segment, the extension of light rail, the blue line, and two-town center. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the Sherdues pathway and what we learned going down to Charlotte and additional expense associated with creating not only a light rail transit system, but also the multimodal capacity for riders and walkers to get to and from and utilize the stations, and to incentivize transit-oriented development, which will be a huge increase in our ability to meet the transitioning urban development goals of our strategic growth area plans. And then finally, briefly talk about costs and funding and expenditures, because those are all going to wrap back as we look at the potential of giving you an economic analysis brief that backs up most of our recommendations. Right on the bet, and on your cover sheet, everybody got a read-ahead chart pack, but if you got a crosscut on the cover, you got the latest version sitting in front of you today. So there'll be some changes over the weekend, but we really tried to get you a read-ahead out so that you had something to sink your teeth into during the weekend, because I know you were just dying to read something. But most important on this first chart is that they have posted with the EPA our DEIS, and as you can see, on the 20th, the EPA will publish it in the federal registry. Cha-ching, that starts the 45-day public comment period. And our HRT partners are going to be performing four public hearings, and that information's going out in press releases and will be known to a lot of folks. And then potentially, we will see the end of the comment period on the 4th of May. So what are the next city council activities focusing in on what your duties are? First of all, we're going to add a fifth one. You're going to get a public hearing. We're going to schedule that on your agenda for April 21st so that the public has an opportunity to come in direct with you, the city council. I don't know if we have to have dinner or something set up for that, but I think it'll be an exciting time. And then potentially as early as, as early as the 5th of May. Now, that'll be probably contingent upon how the comments are being processed at HRT, are they getting a list of the comments back to the city? Are we having a running dialogue from HRT so we can see the evolution of those comments? And then they have the responsibility of responding to this. So we'll see how fast they're kicking out those responses, and then we'll see what the duplication effort is, et cetera. And depending on whether or not we feel like they're caught up on those comments and caught up on those responses, and with the city council's comfort, as early as 5 May, you could potentially make your locally preferred alternative decision with regards to where we're going. But today, I'm going to give you our staff recommendation of what the heck that is. But before I jump right to that, I thought I'd just bring everybody back to some common ground, and there may be some different persuasions associated with some of these thoughts that are in this sheet. But I just want to make sure that we're talking about a minimal operational segment being an affordable piece of light rail transit that can be built. You certainly can't have or figure out a financing scheme that'll pay for $1.3 billion to go all the way to the beach right off the top. That would be extremely difficult to do. And so what a minimal operational segment that we feel is appropriate and is affordable is potentially from Newtown to Virginia Beach's town center. We believe that assuming and building on the investment technology, the investment that the City of Norfolk, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the Federal Transit Authority invested in is the proper way to go at this point. We aren't just planning for a single MOS extension of light rail. We're actually trying to implement Vision 2040, a connected community. That opens the opportunity for us to look at creating a south-side transit system, which is more than just the blue line to town center, from Newtown to town center. It's much bigger than that, and we'll show you what that is. And the fact that the opportunity to strategize and program a whole south-side transit system gives us an opportunity to create the Union Station at that terminus inside the town center and give us a Union Station location. Design of that Union Station is extremely important because many of us believe that the cost associated with continuing the current technology is unaffordable. And we believe that building on the current technology, connecting the two-town centers is extremely important. Building a Union Station that allows the transition to a different technology is extremely important. What I'm actually saying is, the current system is a smart track and a dumb vehicle. Our enemy here in Virginia Beach is distance. We're 302 miles, square miles, a city, and we've got a lot of distance between where we are and where we want to go. So converting your engineering technology to dumb track, smart vehicle, gives you two to two and a half more times the amount of track distance per dollar spent than you do in the current system. And as we know, Councilman Jim Wood was dispatched to Japan on a sister cities' mission liaison, and we sent him a day early and asked him to go find an urban maglev to which he rode and came back and gave us an update and showed us some video. And so we know it exists, and we think that creating a Union Station that allow us to change that technology and get more bang for a dollar is very important. Taking advantage of an unprecedented 50% cost share provided by the Commonwealth, that window is before us. We're going to come by, and either we grab that pile of cash or we pass it up. And that's a heavy council decision to make. It all began with your approval of the town center. And that's the transformation from being America's largest town to becoming the greatest city in the world. And that transformation that started with town center, which has led to your approval of all the SGA plans, specifically the six along the center line of the Norfolk Southern Rightaway, Virginia Beach Boulevard, and Laskin Road, the backbone of that system is based upon having a transit system. We're really moving forward to become a Vision 2040 city. And as we came to grips at your workshop just a month ago, in realizing that those decisions are upon us, we are now making a decision of whether or not that spine needs to be put in place, that we should connect the two town centers of Norfolk and Virginia Beach and set the conditions for growing into a full-fledged city. Okay. So what is the Virginia Beach Transit Extension Study? Well, it started out with just these three alternatives: Newtown Road to Rosemont, Newtown Road to Oceanfront along the Norfolk Southern Corridor, or Newtown Road to the Oceanfront, switching over somewhere in the Great Neck area, getting on Laskin Road through Hilltop, and then coming down Birdneck to Pacific Avenue. We took a look at these money options that were emerging, and we said, oh, my gosh, you know, that's nice, but there's not enough tea in China right now for us to be able to afford those extensions, those minimal operational segments. And so we asked the HRT to add another alternative, and because it was in linear distance, they backed it up, inserted it as 1A, and that's Newtown to Town Center. And they had a range of price that we felt like, with the state providing 50% at 155, we could bring this project in at 310. So due to affordability, we are recommending that the city council solely focus their decision on implementing Alternative 1, and that the public, during this public comment period, spend their energy in looking at that town center alternative to look at with the stationing and the aspects associated with just that minimal operational segment. Because quite frankly, council, any EIS you produce expires after five years, and you have to generate an update to the EIS. And as fast as the city's moving, even in these constricting fiscal-environmental times, we're growth so fast that you're going to get a redo in about 10 years when you get ready to build your second MOS. And we'll talk about that a little later of what those segments are. So what is, bottom line upfront, what is the staff recommendation? Staff recommendation is that we focus on Alternative 1A, and we design and build a four-station scenario. Certainly, we have to modify Newtown, and we have to construct the Witch Duck Station, which will be right adjacent across from the HRC. You all are investing $27-plus million in an HRC developing the Witch Duck Corridor, so it makes sense that we put our light rail station right there. And then we move into the Pembroke Town Center area, and when we show you all the factors and considerations of how we go about analyzing how you station, how you locate those stations and the rationale for those stations, that you focus on constructing the Kellum and the Constitution Stations, because it's the easiest access for the greatest number. It's the cheapest to build because they all are at grade, they're not up in the air. They are spaced to operationally maximize the coverage area at the quarter-mile and the half-mile distances, which is the industry standard for transit-oriented development. They are less developed areas than we currently have, thereby making themselves available to consider the parking rides or the parking garages associated with supporting them. They provide, in this case, Constitution, the best opportunity to provide a north-south line and thereby create the Union Station that supports a technology transition and supports the red line, the green line, and the goal line. It avoids congestion by packing it right into Town Center where you're already congested because of the buses and the kiss-and-rides and all the parking that goes on associated with getting on light rail. And quite frankly, at the end of the day, it allows us to make decisions of affordability for the following. So what are we talking about when we start looking at Vision 2040 and we go from what we look like today to potentially what the build-out of transit-oriented development could be? Well, the original statement, the original study, the study that's ongoing right now is looking at four alternatives. Number one, you're headed eastbound, and there's Independence. So we deadhead the current light rail system at grade on the west side of Independence, and you put a pedestrian walkway across Independence. Okay. Next alternative for stationing is you build a Union Station across the Boulevard, and you have a tail track that comes down to grade, but it's above grade. The third alternative is you shift it to Market Street, still above grade because you cannot get down to grade, so you have to extend that above-grade sector. And then the fourth is to the Constitution Drive, past our municipal BMP, where it's at grade, comes down off the rampant Independence, gets to grade, and deadheads right there. But there are two other stations that were recommended by when we brought in UDA to look at other alternatives. And so with this chart, you can see the four stations I just told you about, where they're located. And now we wanted to say, you know, you get down that road of a study, and they're doing a great job, but all of a sudden, we really get serious about looking at this thing and saying, how do you maximize your investment? Because we're talking serious dollars here. Way to back up a little bit to the west and say, look at Kellum. This is a major venue. It's yet to be developed, has a great capability to support surface parking and maybe parking garages in the future if you can get cost participation with private enterprise. And then on the other hand, when you look at deadheading it on the west side of Constitution, doesn't it make sense to push over to the east side and potentially the renovation, the revitalization of the theaters connected to a parking garage? Universal Studios kind of really taken off that place to be, because it's going to be at grade. And can you imagine north-south, south-side transit system coming in above grade and going north to the airport, et cetera? So we added those two in our analysis. So now we got six stations we had to look at. And it's always good to blow the computer. Okay. So I put a chart in there so that you could say, well, how the heck do you go about figuring out where to position a station? What are the considerations associated with selecting your light rail stations? Now, if we do the purple line to Greenbrier and we come off the Lynn Haven Parkway, where do you want your stations? How do you position those through Centerville? I mean, these are considerations that apply throughout the process that HRT applies, that all municipalities and jurisdictions do. And you can see what they are. And these are industry standards. Give me some quarter-mile, give me some half-mile radiuses. Tell me how you drop off. What's the parking, ride-ship potential, station maximum, walking? And then ultimately, a Union Station. So what is this south-side transit system? Well, there it is. Blue line extending from Newtown to Town Center. Goal line A to Great Neck. Goal line B from Great Neck through Hilltop to Pacific Avenue. Red line north to Little Creek and the airport. The green line south to our Centerra and our TCC and the municipal center. And then I added the purple line because Councilman Dyer and I were talking about the article in the paper that said Chesapeake was interested in figuring out how to get into the transit system, and they were going to go right up the interstate. And I said, gee, we can probably connect them to a system a lot cheaper than going up through that property, because it's very tight, it's all interstate, and it's got a lot of water. If you apply all those principles, you start to get diagrams that show you the north-south corridors, show you what the economic development pieces are, show you the quarter-mile and the half-mile radiuses of each one of the selections, and then do some combining to say, okay, what does it look like if you do Market Street and Kellum? Or maximize it at Kellum and Constitution? And this is a busy chart, but it's really a summary chart of all the individual ones I want to walk you through following that up. So what is the north-south corridor? We did an analysis, and we said, of all those four stations, which one's the best? Well, it's Constitution. Which one's the worst? Market, because I really can't go north and south if you go to Market. I can't get through Town Center. It's already built up. It's in the air. I cannot get a north-south line through there. So you'd have to extend another junction somewhere in order to go north-south if that's the intent. We could say, okay, we're going to focus on one MOS, we're done. That's it. You can make that statement, and that'd be your strategy going forward, in which case I'd probably agree. We need to rethink our study. But if the 2040 strategy of a fully connected city is what you want to do, then you've got to pursue an analysis of how to advance. You know, this at-grade thing versus above-grade is serious business. There's a lot of literature out there that says at-grade develops TOD much faster. It gives you a community feel of walking, of biking, of getting to it, and it's a whole lot cheaper to build them than it is with the famous Brambleton Above Ground Station. And I'm certainly not thinking that's probably the type of design we would want to consider if we go down that road. And we won't mention certain council members that have told me they would just absolutely want to throw me out of the office if I brought something like that in. But anyway, those are the rationale. Let's look at transit-oriented development, build-out. Let's kind of crawl, walk, run into that on those. Kellum, what's the potential that hasn't happened? Independence, both sides of Independence, what's the potential? Market Street, what is the potential? And then Constitution, what is the potential? That's a UDA kind of an illustrative to say visually, that tells you a lot. Okay, so convert it to some numbers. Start to convert that visual to some numbers. This is a simple crawl, walk, run chart that says, this is your existing acreage of development, and this is your potential with your total in the bottom. And so if you really want to say, what's the max potential, you kind of focus in on that line. But acres, what does acres tell you? Well, that's kind of hand grenade range, and I think you want to put a bullet on target when you start talking about this kind of an investment. What's in those economic development numbers? Well, it's the type of development. It's residential, it's office, it's commercial, it's hotels. And it's industrial, likely moving out and relocating to why we invested in the London Bridge Road and the BRAC and all that commercial, that industrial area associated there, or revitalizing themselves to be in that urban setting, because both can exist. Most importantly is these three categories, and I need the council to really understand these three categories, because this is the heart of the economic analysis that we have done. And we have a report completed, we have briefing charts completed, we're going to put a cover letter on it, we're going to send it to you, we're going to let you study it, and if you decide you want to have a briefing, we'll come back and walk you through that. But when you do your analysis, you have this number up top, and that's the SGA plan total build-out number. So that's 100. That's 100% of what you could potentially do over the entire life of the SGA. And so when you do this analysis, you figure out, well, what would 25% of that total build-out be, called modest? What would the average be? That's just 50% of the total build-out. And what would optimistic be, 75% of the build-out? Because nobody believes that we can get 100% of that maximized printout of acres and colors and all that would happen. And so we give you square footage, number of units and number of rooms associated with modest, it's currently in Newtown. And then what is the Witch Duck, Kellum, Constitution? Because that is a staff recommendation. What could that potentially give you at 25% of the total build-out, at 50% of the total build-out, and of the Witch Duck of the 75%? And so you see tools in your packet such as this at Newtown, quarter-mile, and it's kind of cool like a stoplight. Green says probably going to transition and build out first. Amber, probably going to transition and revitalize second. Red, low potential, probably got something good on it, going to take a while for it to evolve. And then anything brown or gray like this, not going to transition, big neighborhoods, et cetera, like that. So here's your existing Newtown Road. Here are the numbers that substantiate that. We've got an economic analysis that backs that up, but we wanted to provide that to you so that you knew exactly what the potential is for those SGA's. And then when you really start to focus in on the main trunk from Witch Duck, Kellum, and Constitution, you see the maximization of your investment to stations. And when you do the analysis, you must remove the duplication of each of those stations so that you're not cheating and that you're honest in your economic analysis. And so here we are, Southern Boulevard. Y'all bought Kempsville lumber, so you own this piece over here to the left, and there's the railway, and we're looking east. So can you imagine your HRC on the corner bent around just like that? And your station either here or your station over there, to be determined. And then how about Kellum? Here's Kellum. There's Town Center. You're looking at the intersection, and gosh, that's what it might be. And those are the square footages. There's Pembroke at Independence. Remember, I told you that would have to be above Independence, be kind of congested, a bit tight, but you'd have to build something that would support all that parking as well as pedestrian access. Market Street extending from Independence, which is over there, headed this way to the east behind us. And then Constitution Drive, looking backwards at Town Center and potentially what it could become if you partner with the owner of movie theaters and go into a joint venture that says, how cool would that be to revitalize those theaters and then develop that entire parcel all the way up to Virginia Beach Boulevard? There's great opportunity and huge numbers on this sheet of paper. So how much does it generate? We pulled a couple charts out of the economic analysis. This is marginal annual. How much does it generate? And here it is, years 1 through 10, years 11 through 20. And what is the average? Of course, it'll be more in year 20 than it will be in year 11, but the average during that on an annual basis, how much real estate tax at a modest level, 50% of design, will it produce? And what's that graph look like? So we talked about the quality, meaning we rank order Class AA, Class A, Class B. And we picked the middle of the row, Class A, associated with that. And we have in our economic analysis an understanding of what AA to B in the middle, Class A-type investments are. Economic cycle, you'll see these little dips, these are the little recessions that reflect zero growth. And coming out of those recessions, only 0.5 GDP of 1%, half a percent coming out of those recessions are inculcated into the economic analysis. I've talked about the type of redevelopment, hotels, residential apartments, retail, and then proximity quarter, half-mile, and then we maintain 93 cents on the dollar just so we didn't have to project. All right, so what is the cumulative? How much money have you put in the bank over a 20-year period of only real estate taxes generated by Newtown, Witch Duck, Kellum, and Constitution? And what does that graph look like? And this is a pretty important graph. It shows you the total build-out line, if maximized, in the SGA plan. It shows you the optimistic line, and then we greened out the average line so that you could see the cumulative real estate taxes growth. And that gives you the upper and the lower. And that gives you the upper and the lower limits. And below that, of course, is the 25% modest build-out. We'll provide you a larger chart. I just wanted to show you a decision matrix that evaluates all this stuff. You're talking about station selection and how do you go about your business as a staff to do that? And it gives you a number, high numbers best. And when you really combine Kellum and Constitution, you get the best number on the table. But once again, the staff recommendation that talks about Kellum and talks about determinants being at Constitution. But there's something additional that goes along with a light rail station and a light rail line. And that is the access to it and the transit-oriented development that goes along with. And currently, HRT is not including any parallel east-west pedestrian bike connectivity improvements. And that's pretty important to you all, having been with you for so long and know what your perspectives are. So we independently are placing into the next budget, the opportunity to pursue that design in parallel with 30% design that HRT is going to do, to be able to bring that online at the same time as an add option item in the bidding for the RFP associated with building the light rail line. So what am I talking about? Because that does made a lot of sense. Well, we packed up a bunch of the bicycle guys and a bunch of staffers and put some helmets on them and shot them down there to Charlotte. And said, okay, go down there and look at this shared-use bike station that's down there. Go for a ride along their rent line. And by gosh, they found 28 feet of width across the tracks and 10-foot, 10 to 16-foot bike paths. And what they noticed is, look at the transit-oriented development that blew up next to it. It's pretty amazing when you see the numbers. And you could see that retail nightlife. And you could see that not only did they like what they had, but the developers said, I want to create a retaining wall. I want to have this. I want my gardens. I want my step-ins. I want access to my flats from that. Because that's a great selling point with regards to urban planning and urban development. And most of you all that deal with millennials know some of their perspectives about how they want to live and how they want to develop their professional life. So what are we talking about? Well, the HRT guys are going to do a 30% design. And their 30% design is going to be this. It's going to be curbed and ballast and curb. And then they're going to have a swale. And then they're going to have a gravel road. And they're going to put Prince Dream-style piping in here. And then it'll have a collection pipe. And it'll come out and there'll be a little concrete wall. And it'll pour down the swale and get in the ditch. And it'll move to a BMP collection area associated with stormwater management. That's their design. Our request is, let's consider stormwater systems that takes it out, puts it into stormwater control, adds a five-foot sidewalk, adds a, any dimensions, there's two of them shown here. But adds a 14-foot dimensional bike path and pedestrian walking, fully supportive of maintenance vehicles that run parallel to it to incentivize transit-oriented development and to create that sense of community that you all have asked for. Oh, yeah. The gravel goes away. You have to put in your stormwater management system. You have the collection. But you have, you have those multimodal pathways running on both sides of it. And so that kind of represents what it does. I think we're all aware of the top priority of the bikeway and trails plan. And it maintains our quality of life. And also, this last bullet is pretty, pretty important. And that is develop, say, connectivity over Independence for pedestrians and bikers to get from one quadrant to the other. And just the next steps are that we, we figure out a way to design this, to create an add option. What if I am correct that we can deliver light rail, the concepts that we want for $280,000? And we still got $30,000 on the table? We want that add option? Million, million, million. It's all a million. Depends what project.
I'll be jolly emotional with that one.
Now you're talking, Will. I build a coal ash every year.
Privately financed. So here we are in what's it cost? Put a cost sheet in there. The current estimate from HRT is in that $327 million arena. It's got some right-of-ways in there. It's got some other costs that are already in the, in the expense column. But they are covering all their costs. And we have not stepped in or messed with their cost estimating. We will not fall to the pitfall that occurred over in Norfolk when they had to lower those cost estimates to make the square peg fit in the round hole. We're kind of staying in line with them. But we believe that we can work our scoping in the RFP to stay within 310 in our commitment to match the 155 that the state's going to provide us. One of the big things is that you're going to have to create a significantly greater bus service associated with servicing light rail transit, both from an FTA perspective, but also from a support to your citizenry in the business community to do that. And so what are the operational costs? I think that's important to discuss because, you know, you currently will have an increase, startup cost of an additional 2.2 million in annual startup. And it'll probably subside to about 1.3. Your bus, for some reason, the state or the feds will not provide us the, what's the right term? Augmentation, supplanting, grant process that offsets some of your costs until you've been in business for two years. And then you can see it subsides down to there. So for years one and two, you can see your annual operating costs and then what it'll stabilize at in years three and beyond. And those have to be dealt with. Funding strategy. I can tell you that through the budget process thus far, Management Services has developed five options associated with looking at how to fund this. And that the city manager will present those, that budget, budget recommendation with his FY '16, two weeks from today. And that he is currently engaged with the council members with one-on-ones. And you're being advised what, what that recommendation is as we speak. And there was some confusion between what you think you may have to spend in the next year's budget versus what that total big giant number is associated with light rail and the associated. We think the maximum that needs to be spent in FY '16 is $20 million. We're going to have to commit to a rail vehicle purchase. And we're going to have to do some engineering and some engineering oversight with the 30% design that HRT brings to the table. Because they're going to put 30% design on top of the DEIS. And that'll give us a pretty good cost estimate. And those will adjust, those costs will adjust as they firm those up. And then what will happen is, we're able to take bridging documents and put right on top of that ability to, to give that RFP to the street. Now, we're not just going to open it up to the street. We're going to go through a request for interest and a request for qualifications to put a series of competitive steps in place compliant with the Virginia Procurement Act. So when it's time to move to RFP, we have a bona fide group of qualified consortiums that can do this level of work, fully, fully vetted and inside the ring so that they are the three or four consortiums that get the RFP. And they'll have a brief period to provide us their presentations and their bids associated with building our scope. So what's the timeline as I wrap this up? I've given you that. We talked about that early on, based upon receipt of information regarding the public comment period. You may have to delay that a week. But if you add seven days to that, that's May 12th. And you'll recall that's your budget, FY '16 budget approval day. May be a serious day for decisions on the part of the city council if you have to delay it a week. Because contained in the manager's budget is that projection of how this gets funded throughout the CIP, though you'll only be appropriating for year one of the CIP. And then, you know, I talked a little bit about RFQs, RFI's, RFQs and how that happens. And if you read this, you'll get a good idea how the contracting piece of this business, how we convert words to deeds. That's what this process represents, is how we implement your will and intent to become Vision 2040 City. And with that, I will take your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions or comments at this time, John?
I just have a process question first because I know a substantial group that won't be filing until the 4th. And I know that generally speaking, the process is that HRT is not only supposed to adjudicate the comments, but they're supposed to republish and show how those comments are addressed in the report. When will that information, this gets back to, I think that the public ought to have the ability to see everything that's been said before they have a chance to come down and talk to us. I think that makes sense on a process point of view. So I'm really interested in what their timeline is, assuming they get a professional critique, what they'll get of their report on the 4th of May. What's their time to, to process that kind of analytical critique?
Sure, Ray. Come on up.
Ray, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, Mayor Sussman. And Councilman Moss, the comment period ends May 4th. And that begins the process of compiling all the comments received, whether it was verbal at the public hearings, whether it's by email, by written letter or any other methodology that individuals, including federal and state regulatory agencies, may submit. We compile those comments. And the first thing we do after we compile them and sort them by areas of concern is we're going to send them to the Federal Transit Administration. Because again, it is their document. At the same time, we provide responses to those comments when we compile them. Any substantive comments? You know, if they point out that we called Independence Boulevard Independence Avenue, duly noted, will be corrected. Those comments along with proposed responses go to FTA after May. It's going to take us a couple of weeks to assemble all that. FTA reviews the comments and responses and may come back to us with a query for more information. May ask us to, for further clarification of that information. All of that then becomes part and parcel of the final environmental impact statement, which is the next phase of development, which will begin in June. We're anticipating the FEIS and the 30% design to begin in June. And Dave's schedule, Mr. Hanson's schedule showed us completing that in the summer of 2016. So it's not part of the DEIS. It becomes part of the final environmental impact statement, part of that record. The DEIS that's released and available now, that's it. It has all the information, all the appendices. The comments and the responses to comments are compiled and put into the FEIS.
But one of the options they have based on the comments is to demand you to go back and rework and retool the DEIS.
It depends, part of the FEIS. We will provide a summary of those comments, obviously, to you all as the body politic before your LPA vote so that you can see what the comments are. But they are part of the FEIS, not the DEIS.
My point in all this is, I think we need to have the benefit of what all the federal regulatory agencies have said. We should be seeing the full body of the testimony and HRT's critique, because that's what I think we owe, before we vote on a preferred alternative. Because then we're voting on less than full information. And we're voting before we're at the point of the process by which all comments have been made known and are available to the public for them to read and come down and comment on. So I think that 5 May, there's no way that can happen. This is the process I'm familiar with. And it is further down the food chain. And I think that if we think we already know the answer and the public comment doesn't matter, well, then of course we can vote. But I don't think that's the case. I think we need to see what everyone has had to say, how it's adjudicated and its merits before we vote. Or we're voting without complete information. I think that's what we owe the public.
If you already know of a group that's going to hold their comments till the 4th, why would they?
Because we are working with university professors, other places to put together, do a professional critique. I mean, this is.
Any other questions or comments? Bobby?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I guess it's been pretty known, Colonel, and you did a tremendous job on the report. But, you know, I still remain skeptical on light rail. And I guess a lot of it, it has to do with, you know, the uncertainty of the real costs that we're going to have to incur over time. And, you know, granted, this is, you know, a good concept and everything. But, you know, once again, I think when it comes to light rail and this new stuff, is it practical? Is it feasible? And is it affordable? And the thing is, one of my concerns about with the Norfolk thing, it's dated technology. It's very expensive to maintain. And also concerns about a system that has sea water problems in Norfolk. Part of the problem is, it's not an elevated system that impedes traffic. And then once again, are people going to regard it as a novelty or practicality? And I guess my main concern is how is this going to impact the other districts throughout the city? Is this going to create a massive substitution effect? Is there going to be an economic benefit at the detriment to all the other businesses? Because if you take people out of cars, they're not going to stop at the stores on the way home, pick up their dry cleaning and everything. And the other thing is, I'm really concerned that we really need a system. And I think part of the frustration is that we're on the verge of many new technologies out there that I think are far superior to light rail, that would offer us more of a system. And then also the barriers to success about we're not on a grid system that lends itself favorably to people whether on Lake Christopher or Lake James. How do you get to a bus station? How do you get to, where do you park your car to get to, you know, to a system? Are people going to use it? You know, if they're going to tag, you know, maybe another half hour plus on a workday, probably, you know, it's the plus thing. I just think that there's a lot more questions than answers at this point. I don't think we've really, you know, delved into some of the alternatives. But what really scares me, is it cheaper to live in Manhattan or, you know, Virginia Beach? You know, let's face it, Manhattan's got a lot of transit-oriented development up there. Very expensive in cities that have this. And the cost of government, and granted, we're going to make some money with transit-oriented development. But what's it going to do to the cost of government in terms of what we're going to need from police, fire, EMS? Retrofitting some of the infrastructure and sewers and stormwater that we're going to need. Because as you go higher, I assume, you know, there might have to be some engineering costs there. What about the impacts of school, Princess Anne High School? Are we going to need a fifth precinct? And, you know, just be careful what we pray for.
Other questions or comments? Amelia, then Barbara?
Yeah, just saying that I thought it was a great presentation. I know you mentioned the Norfolk situation, but there has been more economic growth along that path. And I like the idea that you're going to do the multi-modal study at the same time. Because a lot of the elderly and others who cannot get want to know that. So that could be something to show them all in one package.
Barbara?
On, I guess it was 5/39, when you talked about the costs and so forth. And of course, we know that this doesn't include the shared-use path, which I think is a really critical. We've talked about that from the very beginning. And I think it really has to happen in order to make this truly multimodal. When does that cost get factored in? I know it says that the, the cost estimate that you had talked about doesn't include that. So is that a totally separate project? I know it's all city. I think it's all city. I know it's not HRT, but maybe there's federal dollars somewhere along the line for bikes because they usually do have some funding for that. So when does that get to be in the package?
You know, we've talked, we've talked to the state, Mrs. Henley, about sharing in that, in that cost 50/50. And I think ultimately, you'd probably bid that as an alternate to your, to your design so you could see what it costs and whether or not it can be included in the 310 cap that the state has laid out. So I think you would know that after you actually get that bid prices back, which will be a year and a half from now.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just say it's a very good presentation. Time to keep it moving.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, thank you.
I appreciate your time, Council. Thank you.